Marty, can you confirm you hear me okay?
I hear you just fine.
Thank you very much.
You're welcome.
Marty, are, are you, do you have your ears on? It's not.
I have my ears on. How are you?
Fine, thank you. Nice to not see you, but hear you.
Yeah. I'm glad you got everything working.
You know, the, um, the image, what I sent you was a screenshot uh, that I had saved onto OneDrive.
Oh, okay.
Yeah, I don't think OneDrive was the issue. It's very strange. I don't know. I, I've never had that happen before, but when I, when I hit the link to the packet, it took me to that screen.
That, yeah, Rachel did tell me that sometimes Outlook will do that. It will convert it somehow. So she said if it happened again, she'll work with you on trying to figure out the issue.
Okay. Yeah, and I'll try to not wait till the last minute. Actually, I, I had getting in or gotten in earlier and then I was able to have a few days to deal with it. So it wasn't actually the last minute. So thank you very much.
Oh, you're very welcome. Anytime.
Mr. McNeely, this is Chair Aunt Taveris, and I'm just doing our pre-meeting sound check. Can you hear me okay?
Chair Antares, I can hear you.
Okay, you know what? That's good enough. I think if you can, everyone can. And I can hear you well, too. All right, we'll start in three minutes.
Good afternoon, Chair Antares. This is Jess McNeely with staff and we're here and ready.
Okay, thanks, Mr. McNeely. I did the sound check with Mr. Schwartz, so I believe we're good to go. Mr. McNeely, this is Chair Aunt Taveris, and we've got about a minute before the study session starts. I was wondering if we can compare commissioners present. Um, I've got Vice Chair Burton, I've got Commissioner Clifford, I've got Commissioner Ruggles, Commissioner Wilson, um, Commissioner Williams, Commissioner Best. Do you know if our new newest Commissioner Sheila Walsh is with us?
Uh, Madam Chair, I do not see her on this. No. Um, I do believe and uh, Mari Hernandez can confirm, but I do believe we, we got a a RSVP or confirmation that she would be on this hearing this evening.
Okay, I didn't know if she might be under a name that I didn't recognize. So, um, and that's okay. You know what? We, we've certainly have enough. We don't need a quorum for the study session anyway.
Absolutely.
Four o'clock, so Mr. McNeely, would you please start the study session?
Absolutely. Thank you, Madam Chair. Commissioners and staff and any members of the public president, welcome to the April twenty-sixth, twenty-three Planning and Zoning Commission Study Session. Madam Chair, I will point out, there's, I see one attendee here, fireflies.ai notetaker Deborah. Uh, that's the only, that is the only participant I see on our meeting that uh, that I don't identify or, and I'm not, I'm not sure who that is. So if that happens to be Planning and Zoning Commissioner Sheila Walsh, please let us know. And we'd like to identify you and welcome you to the meeting. Um, and if not, then we will kick off with our, with our study session. Commissioners and staff, I would refer you to your study session packet for this afternoon. Um, and if you could scroll down to page three of your packet, we list the applications that are scheduled for public hearing next month on Wednesday, May thirty-first, two thousand and twenty-three. Uh, we've got five public hearing items. And Madam Chair, if you're ready, we can go ahead and give us a, a quick staff overview of each of those five.
Yes, please go ahead, Mr. McNeely.
Okay, item one is CUP twenty-three zero six. It is a conditional use permit request for a recreational vehicle as a permanent residence on one acre in the Valley area. Uh, Zach is managing this case. He's already shared his screen, so go ahead, Zach.
Okay, good evening, Commissioners, Madam Chair, anyone in the public. Uh, this is CP twenty-three zero zero six. It's a request for an RV as a permanent residence. This is in the Valley area, so at the bottom of Grand Canyon Unit Two. So here's Highway one eighty. Here's the junction with sixty-four up at the top left-hand corner of the screen. Um, surrounded by mostly AR zone properties, but also outside of the Grand Canyon subdivision to the south, there's some general zone properties. Uh, this is the, the subject property here. Uh, and so here's an aerial, uh, so there's probably some pinion juniper trees on the property. Uh, nothing around it, to my knowledge, is developed on this neighboring parcel. These might be an RV shed, uh, something to that extent, but, but this is an aerial of the subject property. And then I did receive a site plan right now. It's just, um, a photo of the site plan, but I will get something a little bit better to put in your packet, but as you can see, the setbacks are shown on the property and where the applicant is proposing. The travel trailer is, um, outside of the setback areas. The applicant would use an onboard composting toilet for waste, and they would take that to an approved dump station. Uh, the applicant would haul water and they would use so solar panels for power. Uh, and with that, it should be a pretty simple case, but I'm happy to take any questions, comments, things to research uh, to put in the analysis for the case.
This is Chair Aunt Taveris. Uh, Mr. Schwartz, I'm not seeing any. So, Mr. McNeely, let's go ahead and move to number two, please.
Absolutely. Thank you, Madam Chair. Case number two is CUP twenty-three dash zero one five. It is a conditional use permit request for a metal storage container in the G-zone. It's in the South Rim Ranch area in Valley. Zach is also managing this case. He has his screen shared, so go ahead, Zach.
Madam Chair Commissioners, this request is for a forty-foot metal storage container. So in residential zones by right, uh, people can have one-twenty footer permanently and they can, there's a variety of ways that they can do more temporarily associated with a construction project. Uh, but when you go to one-forty footer in residential zones, that does require a conditional use permit, so that is what this request is about. Uh, this is also in the Valley area, so it's actually in South Rim Ranches where all of these parcels are part of an unsubdivided lands plat. So they're all thirty-six acres plus. I believe the subject property is about, uh, just a little over thirty-seven acres. And here's an aerial of the subject property. It's a little bit irregularly shaped. Uh, but here it is, and there's currently a driveway coming off. I believe there's an existing garage on the property and the applicant is planning to put a manufactured home on the property. But, uh, as you can see, it's a pretty large property and there's relatively dense, densely forested here. So as far as impacts neighboring properties, it should be pretty limited. Here's a site plan, so this is zoomed in on sort of the southwest portion of the thirty-six acres. And it's about three hundred feet from the property boundaries is where they're planning a manufactured home. And then this storage container, this forty footer is here. And, uh, my understanding is that it is a solar shed that will be used to power the manufactured home. It's an off-grid property. And I guess here is where the garage is. So here is a photo of the unit. Uh, it's on the property already, and here are the solar panels. Uh, typically, what the zoning ordinance requires for the storage containers, even when they're approved by right, uh, unless they're temporary, uh, but typically what's required is that they will paint the unit so that it either matches structures on the property or it blends into the surrounding natural environment. On the right here, you can see they've chosen sort of an earth tone beige color uh, that they'll paint this unit. Uh, so that should be consistent with what the zoning ordinance intends. Uh, and this should be a pretty simple case. So if there's any questions, comments, or things for me to research, I'm happy to take any of that information.
Commissioner Wilson, please go ahead.
Thank you, Chair. Um, Mr. Schwartz, I was curious to know if at the next meeting, we could see a topographical representation? If that shipping container is going to be at the top of a hill, um, in the surrounding area, that would make it a lot different than if it were in the bottom of a valley as far as visibility and impact on neighbors.
Sure, Commissioner, sorry.
And then a second thought is, um, this is a, it's already there now. Um, is that a violation of current zoning code?
So Commissioner William, uh, Wilson, it is technically, uh, a violation of the zoning code. What they're doing right now is trying to get it into compliance and so uh, as far as from a code compliance standpoint, they're going through the right channels. Um, and you'll be able to review it, and if it's denied, then we can continue going through the, the code enforcement process. Um, as far as the comments on the topography, that it looks like there are some topo lines here, but they're really far apart. I'm gonna go to the property, take some pictures that might help, and I think the county has some data on, um, with some topo lines as well, so certainly I can make that part of the analysis.
And how long has it been there?
I'm not actually aware, and I'm not sure that this resulted in a compliance case or whether the applicant through some other means found that it wasn't legal and then decided to apply to make it legal. Uh, any of the other planners on the Zoom right now, if, if you have that answer, I don't have that answer.
I'm sorry. Thank you very much.
Okay.
I can jump in and answer that question if you would like.
Go ahead, girl.
Okay, great. Um, so I, I did talk to the applicant in their pre-application meeting. My understanding is that they're in the process of building right now. Um, so I don't believe it would have been there long. Uh, they're just trying to get power to the property. I do know that they have a letter of support from one of the neighbors. Um, so they're talking to the neighbors um, and haven't had any issues yet.
Thank you very much, Ms. Bingham.
Yeah, that, uh, and this is Jess McNeely with staff. That, that was my, um, my impression as well is that, um, the applicant is, is now going through the permitting process for their home on the property. And in the process, all of these things get reviewed and, um, along with a, with the permit for their manufactured home, they have to show a site plan. They have to show all improvements on the site. And, uh, probably came to the realization of like, oh, this, uh, metal storage container um, does in fact require a, a conditional use permit in, in knowing that going through the permitting process. That's kind of one of our checks and balances in the system, uh, to catch these kind of things.
Thank you, Mr. McNeely. Uh, I'm not seeing any other questions, so let's go ahead and go to number three.
Okay, um, Commissioners, case number three is CUP dash twenty-one dash zero six one. It is a conditional use permit request for a utility facility. This would be a propane storage tank for, for, uh, essentially facilitate, um, propane filling. It's on four point seven acres in Tubus City in industrial zoning. Of course, a utility facility requires a conditional use permit in all zoning districts. Uh, Bob is managing this case. I see he has his screen shared, so go ahead, Bob.
Thanks, Mr. McNeely. Thank you, Commissioners, Madam Chair and Commissioners. Uh, this case is the John Graves Tubus City Propane Storage Tank. And, uh, it is owned by the San Juan Southern Paiute Tribe of Tubus City. The applicant is Jeff Skinner from the John Graves Company. Uh, as, uh, Mr. McNeely indicated, this is light industrial zone. Size of the property is four point seven seven acres, and it's a conditional use for a propane tank, which is a utility facility. This is a vicinity map showing the subject property. This is the Tubus City Island County Island, so right in the middle of the reservation out here at Tubus City, there is fee simple land, private land. Uh, and, uh, that is under county jurisdiction. The subject property is located right there where the arrow is pointing, right in the southwest corner of the county island in Tubus City. And this is an aerial photo showing the subject property, uh, right across the boundary right here. This is reservation uh, to the, to the west, and this is the county island to the east. This, uh, apparently this building here has been torn down. It's no longer here. And the applicant is leasing this area on this end of the property for the storage, storage tank. This is a site plan showing the entire property. This is called out as a slab. No longer, there's no longer a building there. Uh, you can see the two streets, so they come together. Both of them are on the property through easements. And you can see this fence, existing fence around the lease area. And inside the lease area, you can see the, where the propane tank will be. And now I'll kind of zoom in on that so you can see that better. So this is the actual area for the CUP, as I pointed out before, an existing fence around it. And this is a chain link, proposes a chain link fence, six-foot chain link fence with the storage tank right there and a shed uh, for security. They'd put a new gate in here. And, uh, staff has worked with him and consistent with another case in this area, in fact, right across the street. Staff has indicated, has suggested they put in maybe a few pinyon trees as landscaping and request a landscape waiver for your typical landscaping in this zone for this use. And this, uh, this basically shows the property across the street. This was actually originally a John Graves propane tank right here on this side. Uh, it's since been sold to Titan. But as you can see, you can even see on this aerial, there are a few trees in the front, and that's what was required through this conditional use permit. This is a photograph of a, uh, similar tanker. I believe it's exactly the same type of tank that they're proposing, even with this communication antenna here. So this is basically what it would look like. At this point, they are, however, proposing to paint it, to not paint it, uh, yellow, since it are, actually, this is more of a tan. Since it's, uh, it's not on a highway, I believe this one is the one in Valley, which is on a highway on sixty-four invisible. I'm actually not sure about that, but, um, so they are at this point proposing to leave it as white as is. And with that, I'll take any questions from the commission.
All right, Commissioner Ruggles, please go ahead. I think you're muted, Commissioner Ruggles.
I'm sorry about that. I missed. Mr. Short mentioned the site directly to the north and, uh, uh, I visited that site when it got at CUP and a couple of comments, uh, I think, uh, relative to the, uh, the landscaping, um, this may be of interest to Mr. Short and the rest of the commission. Uh, we really, really, uh, uh, did not ask for much in the way of landscaping for Titan propane directly to the north because of lack of water and the difficulty of supplying water. So they, they got, uh, quite an adjustment to the landscaping requirements. And I think that's a very similar case with this property, too. And, uh, one thing, I know, uh, Mr. Short mentioned the color of the tank. I think it would be wise to, uh, go with the recommendation from the propane company. There is a, uh, there was a substantial difference in the reflectivity of a white tank versus anything else. You'd be quite surprised at how much of a difference that will make in terms of, of heating of the propane in the tank. So, um, I think, uh, given the, uh, type of, uh, installation and the location, um, I think it would be wise to consider, uh, when the conditions are written, leaving the color up to the, the, uh, propane company for that reason. It is a safety issue, uh, to some people, uh, and I consider that in, in mentioning this.
Thank you, Commissioner Ruggles.
Thank you, Commissioner Ruggles. Uh, Commissioner Best.
Thank you, Madam Chair. Um, I wonder if we normally talk to a fire department in cases like this, and I don't even know in whose jurisdiction this would be, but it, it seems like having a, a fire department take a look at it uh, would be a good idea. Thanks.
Thank you, Commissioner Best. Uh, in this case, it is in Tubus City. Tubus City is a, is a pretty well-developed, uh, place. Uh, my understanding is that fire service is available. We've had lots of other developments out here. Uh, this would go through a building permit process with our building permit, you know, with our building division, and they would look at it and, uh, and I think they would, they would, uh, follow, uh, whatever procedure they have, and that would be part of it to make sure it was fire safe.
Okay, thank you.
Commissioner Wilson?
Uh, Mr. Short, I'm wondering, the, um, objective of any landscaping requirement would be as a partial shield to the tank. Is that the theory here?
Commissioner Wilson, yes, that, that is, uh, I think that is part of it. If you look at pinyon trees, I think my thought was if you put in pinyon trees and you get them established, then they'll be able to grow on their own and they'll get larger and they'll provide a little bit of shielding for this. Uh, in the commercial, actually, this is in, in the industrial zone for developments like this. There's specific landscaping required in the zoning ordinance under section four point four. And what, uh, under, through the CUP process, that landscaping is allowed to be waived by the commission. So if the commission sees this, uh, a particular situation, then they can waive part of it. Uh, we felt like, you know, staff felt like it should have some landscaping and for screening, basically. So you're correct about that.
So there isn't any landscaping there now. Um, and there's only limited landscaping around the tank across the street. There's an identified lack of, of, um, water to use to support landscaping. I wonder if we should explore, since the tank is going to be fenced in anyway, could we, you know, make the tent, the fence more of a privacy fence? Count that as the screening of the tank and eliminate the need for additional landscaping requirements that are going to require water and maintenance and things like that.
Commissioner Wilson, we can certainly explore that.
Uh, ask the applicant and what, what they would prefer. But it just, knowing how difficult things are to grow, even where I'm at, um, and knowing how much more difficult it must be there. Even if we made a landscape requirement, the chances are, you know, most of it's not going to survive. And once it doesn't, unless we're out there trying to enforce things, it, it doesn't matter anyway, so it, it can be kind of a futile attempt. I'll just leave that there and let you and the, and the applicant consider. Thank you.
Okay, thank you, Commissioner Wilson.
Commissioner Ruggles?
Yeah, just, just a little, uh, bit of hindsight on this. I think, uh, when we, uh, gave the CUP to Titan across the street, at the time, I don't believe that we could waive the landscape requirement. So, uh, Commissioner Wilson's suggestion is an excellent one to explore. Um, I've been to that area and I think privacy fence would be a lot better than trying to, um, ask the applicant to maintain, uh, the initial growth of pinions, uh, in that area. It is extremely sandy. I'll tell you what, uh, it's, um, just a little bit of a step beyond some pretty good desert areas that we think of Arizona as being in the, uh, lower part of the state. So.
Thank you, Commissioner Best and Commissioner Wilson. Uh, those are good suggestions. I've always, uh, not been, you know, I've always kind of uh, hesitated to require landscaping in these areas and, you know, to require, because they'll have to come out and water it and then, uh, let it establish. I mean, there, there had been, we have had pinyon trees at some of the more, uh, some of the stores that have been put in in this area. I think they've done all right, but they have had irrigation systems as well. Uh, so I can, I can run that by the applicant, see what they think, and if the Commissioners agree, then, you know, yeah, we can give them a choice and, uh, and see what they would prefer to do.
All right, thank you. I think that we got some excellent recommendations from our Commissioners this evening, Mr. Short, so I definitely support, uh, dialoguing with the applicant on this one. With that, I don't see any other hands raised, so please, Mr. McNeely, bump to number four.
Thank you, Madam Chair. Case number four, ZC twenty-two zero, uh, fourteen is a zone change request or change of zoning regulations in the PC Plan Community Zone out in Greenhaven. It would be a, a change from RMH Residential Manufactured Home Lots that are vacant uh, to CG Commercial General ten thousand minimum lot size, uh, commercial zoning in the same area, and it would be for essentially a, a hotel motel resort on the property. Bob is managing this case and he has a screen shared, so go ahead, Bob.
Thank you, Mr. McNeely. Thank you, Madam Chair and Commission. Uh, this case is the Srennevis in Greenhaven Zone Change. And in this case, property owners, I own a Brody of Sedona, Arizona. The applicant is Robbie Pope of St. George, Utah. And currently the zoning is PC plant community. Uh, with RMH and that's residential manufactured home standards applied. So this is Greenhaven is all in the PC zone. And different areas in Greenhaven have these different zoning standards applied. So what the applicant's proposing is that that be changed to CG ten thousand commercial standards. And that allows for the use that they're proposing to be, uh, to be by right. So the property size is, is actually four parcels totaling three point three seven acres. And the request is for a hotel motel resort. That is a permitted use in the CG ten thousand zone, as I've said. And that would allow them to do this by right. Uh, they're proposing at this point eight units for rental. And that would also include a spa pool, common use area. And a common use building for meditation and wine tasting. Uh, the four lots would be combined into one, and that is to preclude any need for setbacks. In like, like they would have in the current zone. Uh, they have not proposed any landscaping, lighting or signage with the zone change. That is something that would come later. When they apply for a building permit for this development, then all of these standards in the zoning ordinance would come into play at that point. This is a vicinity map showing the subject property. This is in Greenhaven, which is right on the border of Utah and Arizona. In fact, in this development, if you step out in the backyard, you're in Utah. Uh, you can see Paige down here. And interestingly, this is the boundary around Paige, which goes all the way out to Greenhaven, but doesn't take in Greenhaven. So it is right on the boundary page as well. This is of course Lake Powell. And this is an aerial photo, uh, showing the subject property. These are very oversized lots for this zone. And there are four of them. They all have the same owner, as I've said, uh, Ms. Brody also owns this prop, this parcel right here. They have, they're not included yet in the zone change. And this is a site plan. Showing the propose, the proposal. Uh, and these are the four lots that would all be, the lot lines would all go away. They'd be combined into one larger commercial lot. Uh, each of them, right now, they're showing eight different units on there. They did mention ten in the narrative, but I have not seen a site plan with that yet. So we'll see, I'll work with them and see what they actually want to do. Uh, and that actually might've said ten buildings. This would be a clubhouse. And this would be the spa pool house right here. And they did provide some renderings of their proposal. And these are some of the pictures from the renderings. Looks like very, very modern buildings. Possibly constructed at the, uh, there is a, they're in the old power plant at Page. They are, they are now, uh, building these types of buildings. So, you know, they're like manufactured housing, manufactured units. So they could be coming from there. And with that, I'll take any, any questions from the commission.
All right, this is Chair Antiveris. Mr. Short, I am not seeing any. So, Mr. McNeely, would you please bump to item number five?
Thank you, Madam Chair. Uh, item five is our final public hearing item for next month. It is CUP twenty-three dash zero one two. It is a conditional use permit request for a private park and trail on a twelve acre parcel in the OS open space zone. And, uh, and this property is right along the north side of I forty, right along the right of way, uh, kind of between, um, between Belmont Parks. Uh, Kelly Bingham with our planning staff is managing this case. I see she already has her screen shared. So go ahead, Kelly.
Thank you, Mr. McNeely. Uh, so this case, uh, as Mr. McNeely said, is the Barefoot Trail Foundation, uh, case. And this is for a private trail and park. Here's an aerial photo of the property. Uh, it's treed with, um, uh, ponderosa pine for the most part. Uh, you can see it's just north of the I forty. And this is right in between parks and Belmont. Um, as you're driving, uh, west from Flagstaff, you would see this parcel. Um, you can see off to the right that there's a rest stop. Um, my understanding is that it's now defunct. Um, and it would not be used for the access. Instead, they would be using this Forest Service Road, one forty-six W, uh, as their access to the parcel. And the request is for the private park and trail in the open space and conservation zone. Uh, as such, the applicant wants to maintain as much of the natural landscape as possible. Uh, their project is to do a curated trail. Um, and they want to have various activities along the trail, uh, which they're calling adventure stations or sensory stations. Um, and at those stations, there would be things like mud pit, stepping stones, balancing logs and bridges. In addition, uh, the development of phase one is going to include a ticketing shed, playground equipment, a zip line and slack line, picnic tables and a food truck and craft stall. Uh, if the applicant were to develop a phase two, and they estimate that that might be three to five years from their opening. Uh, they might include some changes to the adventure statement or stations, uh, as needed. And a treehouse and a wooden, uh, outlook tower. Their season is going to be from May to August. And the applicant has indicated that might be a little flexible. And there will always be a park manager and at least two employees on the property every day. Here's a site plan, uh, just to give a visual of what the applicant wants to do. Here's the entrance off to the right. And you can see that the parking is on the side of the parcel as well. If you can see my mouse, uh, it's the yellow part that I'm circling. And then when the applicants, uh, I'm sorry, when the customers arrive, uh, they're going to go to the welcome shed for tickets. And then this gray line here is, uh, where people will go on the trail. Um, everything in between the trail, uh, are different activities that they can do along the way. The applicant, um, has been in really close contact with the ponderosa fire district and the forest service to make sure that they can access their property safely. Uh, and the fire chief did go out there and they confirmed with the applicant that they would be able to access the site with a small truck, and that would be sufficient to serve the property. Uh, as I mentioned before, no access is going to be permitted through the nearby, uh, rest stop, uh, with the Arizona Department of Transportation. Uh, they're going to be using that Forest Service Road. And that connects to Branigan Park, which is a county maintained road. And for their sanitation, they'll be using portable toilets and hand sanitizer stations. As staff considers this case, we're going to be looking at conformance with the zoning ordinance and the parks area plan. Uh, and I see that Commissioner Ruggles has his hand raised.
Yes, go ahead, Commissioner Ruggles.
Okay, this time I remembered to unmute. Thank you. Um, one thing that I, I think is, uh, rather important, uh, considering the, uh, the kind of an impact and the intensity of this use, uh, will be what the, uh, Forest Service, uh, wants to do in terms of the special permit that they typically issue for uses such as this. The other thing, of course, is, uh, traffic impact statement because, uh, Forest Service one forty-six, uh, does connect up with Branigan Park Road and Branigan Park Road is paved at that, uh, uh, junction right there. And I believe in sitting in with the, uh, staff, uh, session earlier today on this. That, uh, the applicant indicated the, uh, use could be as high as a hundred people a day. But that's a considerable amount of traffic for that road. I have been out, I've had to use Branigan Park Road quite a bit in the last few years. Um, and, uh, that's a considerable traffic impact on that road. That is a lot of extra traffic, uh, compared to what is normally on that road. So those are, um, some, something to, uh, seriously consider. Um, I think that, uh, the condition of the road and the, uh, specifications the road meets, uh, should be looked at very closely, uh, as a result of the amount of traffic it will get. So other than that, uh, I haven't got anything else to add at this point.
Thank you, Commissioner Ruggles. Uh, Commissioner Wilson?
I'd like to echo, um, Commissioner Ruggles' concerns about the, the road. Based on, um, the map, Ms. Bingham, it appears that their property does not even actually touch that Forest Service Road and that they would need a driveway across the Forest Service to access their property. Is that correct?
That's a good, uh, question, Commissioner Wilson. Um, I will double check with the applicant, uh, but they seemed to, um, believe that the Forest Service Road did, uh, touch the parcel. Or, um, at least that it was close enough to make that driveway. I can go back to their site plan, uh, and show you what exactly they've said. So it looks like this here would be their driveway. Um, and I know that she's been in close contact with the Forest Service, but I do appreciate the comments. I'm going to make sure that, um, what she has worked on so far is going to be up to the standard of the county.
And, and also echoing Commissioner Ruggles a little bit, um, while a small fire truck might be able to make it there, um, the other important thing would be, can an ambulance get there based on kind of activities that might be going on that could become necessary? Um, and if they're using outhouses, um, sanitation trucks are fairly large and heavy. Um, so road conditions are going to be, I think, really important to the overall success of this project. So, thank you.
Thank you, Commissioner Wilson. Uh, this is Chair Antiveris. Um, I share the same concerns regarding the road. And I want to confirm with you, Ms. Bingham, that what Commissioner Ruggles said that there would be about a hundred people there per day. Is, is that what the applicant is proposing?
Yes. So in the applicant's narrative, uh, they've stated that they're looking to have fifteen thousand to twenty-five thousand visitors in a year. And given their limited operating season, um, I calculated that out roughly to be a little over a hundred visitors a day. So I'll need to double check with the applicant and make sure that's what they intended. Uh, but that's what's in their narrative.
Okay, um, because I was thinking about this, they're going to be, I mean, most likely, very few people are going to access this. Um, from the park's exit, come in, you know, out the Branigan Park Road and come in that way. So I believe most of the traffic that's going to access this is going to be coming off of I forty, then through, you know, that, that, or that roundabout that's already going on at the, at the, uh, travel center there. Are there any concerns about, about this additional traffic even there? Cause they will have to pass through there to get to the park.
I will need to run that by our county engineer and perhaps our public works team as well. Uh, but thank you. I, I will be sure to look into that.
Okay, uh, thank you, Ms. Bingham. And, uh, I don't know whose hand went up first, but, uh, Commissioner Best, I'm going to go to you.
Uh, thank you. Usually in these cases, we look for two, uh, ways to egress. And, um, you know, I don't have the map in front of me. I'm just looking at what I see here. That, uh, Kelly's put up, but, um, maybe we could have a breakaway gate that goes out into the A dot property. That, that might suffice. Just some way to get out of there should a wildfire, uh, take off. And block the road. Thanks.
Thank you, Commissioner Best, uh, Commissioner Ruggles.
Yeah, just one additional comment on the, uh, one forty-six access. Uh, I see on the, uh, what we have on the screen here is a, called a spur road. Uh, and that may be an additional bit of roadwork that's necessary. So it's, I think, uh, a good thorough looking at it by the, uh, forestry service is going to be necessary to decide what has to be done and what they are going to require. Uh, and, uh, in the past, we've had similar cases where, uh, we could not, uh, give them, uh, or the applicant, uh, a CUP until that permitting was completed with the Forest Service. Um, the other thing I'm going to mention to Kelly is that, uh, given, um, what we're looking at here, uh, I definitely would like to go along when she goes out to post that. Um, because I do want to take a look at the road and the access from the end of Forest Service Road, one forty-six to, uh, the property. I took a real close look at this on the, uh, both the satellite and, uh, the mapping that County GIS provides. So I'm not exactly sure what they've got there, but I certainly want to get out there and take a look at it in person.
Thank you, Commissioner Ruggles. I am not seeing any other hands raised. So, Mr. McNeely, if you could please, uh, bump up to Community Development Department update, please.
Absolutely. Thank you, Madam Chair. Um, I'm going to share my screen so we can see, um, your actual, uh, your actual agenda for discussion purposes. So on the Community Development Department update, item one is your recurring, uh, update reminder about the Route sixty-six Ground Fields EPA grant. Um, we have been working with this grant for some time. Uh, Melissa's with it and she is our representative connection to it. Uh, does anyone have any questions? And Melissa, do you have any comments you wanted to pass on to the commissioners on this item?
Good evening, commissioners. Just wanted to remind you that the grant actually will conclude in September of this year and we are, uh, the funds are being spent. So if you know of any projects that would benefit from this, please, um, ask that any potential applicants apply now because, um, it is on a first come, first served basis for those funds. It's a really, um, great benefit for qualifying properties. If you have any questions, let me know. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Shaw. And I'm not seeing any hands raised. So, uh, let's go to item number two.
Thank you, Madam Chair. Item two, reminder that our staff, uh, primarily Melissa Shaw is working with the city of Flagstaff on the Flagstaff Regional Plan Update. Several of us have, uh, have participated in their workshops. Um, so again, any commissioners have questions of Melissa? And Melissa, if you had any comments you wanted to pass on to the commissioners.
Thanks, Jess. Just to, um, let the commissioners know, the, um, first phase of the scenario planning workshops have concluded. And then through the rest of the summer, the, the presence of the regional plan will be primarily at, um, just informational booths at different outreach events. And then there will be some, uh, feedback or rather some report back from the scenario planning workshops. But then starting in the fall, there will be some, some additional workshops to begin the scenario choosing process. So if you're not on the mailing list, then, uh, there is a link right in on your agenda to sign up for the regional plan mailing list. And we'll continue to keep you informed about upcoming workshops and events. But the process is moving along. There was, uh, I think over a hundred and sixty, um, participants in the scenario planning workshops. So those were well attended and we are moving ahead. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Shaw. I don't see any hands raised. So, uh, Mr. McNeely, let's go to item number three.
Okay. Thank you, Madam Chair. Item three is updating you all on our updates to the comprehensive plan. We're calling that Envision twenty forty-five. Um, so the board held a work session on the public participation plan on both March seventh and March twenty-eighth. Uh, we've continued to work with the board on input on the P three, the public participation plan. Um, we included the P three, the public participation plan in your study session packet. And, um, wanted to brief you on and wanted to brief you on the changes, the updates as recommended by the board to the Public Participation Plan as we will be, as we will be taking that to them here pretty soon next month. So Melissa, did you have any comments you wanted to to highlight with the commission? And if you'd like, I can stop sharing if you would like to share any images.
Thank you. And Commissioners, Jess, I would like to just briefly show you the table of contents that were in the copy of the public public participation plan that are in your packet so that we can just talk about what's changed since you initially saw it. And as Jess mentioned, and there we go. Is it sharing for you now?
Yep.
Okay, so the board, it was primarily a formatting issue. We think we've we've met with each individual supervisor and asked for their comments on the plan that they reviewed in early March to find out what the just to dive a bit deeper into what they had wanted to see by way of public participation. And really, the what we learned is that the supervisors wanted to see the community members contacted upfront and center. So we've added a few, we've added a table of contents and some engagement principles here just to talk about what we will do to strategize, how to build relationships, go out to where people are, which is part of our plan and what we had intended to do with with this public outreach. We want to know and understand our diverse county audiences. We are going to try to make this planning process exciting as much as possible, knowing that that can always be a challenge for people. And along with that, remove barriers and create bridges for engagement and then to hopefully determine and create some feedback loops. So once the plan is done, there are ways that people can continue to participate. And then you'll see right under it is the section for reaching county communities. So this is for the most part, a reorganization of the plan that you saw initially. We've also added, I'm just going to scroll to the bottom, a map that highlights what's called a community engagement map. And it highlights, and I think it, for some reason, it's looking a little bit blurry on the screen, but it's it should be clear in your packet. This highlights the different county communities. And, you know, what you can see in the brown are the area plans. The other communities that are in unincorporated county are listed on here. The darker areas in the black are the incorporated communities. And then the the different lands, this land over here in the this yellowish buff color, this is Navajo Nation, the the darker orange is Hopi Land. Over here in this lighter tan color is what we call where the checkerboard is, where it's a combination of private land and state trust. And then you can see the green would obviously be either Park Service or National Forest. So this highlights in a more visual form the extent of the outreach that we will be working to connect with these different communities throughout the county. So we are starting to organize what we are, what are going to be focus groups, small focus groups throughout all these communities. And we'll be doing those throughout the summer to introduce ourselves to the communities, but also to get to know our far the region outside of Flagstaff, basically. So we really get to connect with people that live far and wide in the county. So the public participation plan was in your packet. And if you have any questions or comments about this, we would certainly like to hear them. Thank you. Oh, and then we'll be returning to the Board of Supervisors for their action on this, because if you recall, by state statute, the board needs to take action on the comprehensive plans, public participation plan, and approve it. So that will be going back to the board on May 20 3rd.
Okay, thank you, Ms. Shaw. And I'm not seeing hands raised. So, Mr. McNeely, let's go to item number four, please.
Okay, thank you, Madam Chair. Thank you, Commissioners. Thanks, Melissa. And we appreciate you all being a part of of reviewing that public participation plan. Okay, is everyone seeing the agenda again?
Yep, we can see it.
All right. So, Madam Chair, that gets us up to item number four. Just a reminder that staff is currently working on the lighting code based on the City of Flagstaff's code and and some updates to our zoning ordinance here in kind of an off year as we as we start to prep the, as we're working on the comprehensive plan updates. So you can anticipate seeing seeing those updates at some point here in the next few months. And that, Madam Chair, that would wrap up our Community Development Department update. And if there's any questions, like to take them. If not, we can move on to a Board of Supervisors update.
Mr. McNeely, I'm not seeing any hands or unmutes, so please go to Board of Supervisors update.
Thank you, Madam Chair. For Board of Supervisors update, want to let you know what they've recently done since since your last hearing. On April 11th, the Board of Supervisors heard two zone changes, ZC 2301. That was, that was the manufactured home park zone change up just north of the valley area called the Grand Canyon Tiny Home Village. And they also had a hearing on ZC 22-21. That was called the Grand Canyon Oasis. That was the expansion of commercial zoning for an RV park at an old historic trading post along Highway 89 north of Donnie Park, Timberline, Fernwood. Say if you were heading north on 89 en route to to the Navajo Nation or to Page. Both of those zone changes were recommended for approval by you, the Planning and Zoning Commission, along with conditions. The board action on both of those items was to approve with the conditions as recommended by you, the commission. Any questions on the public hearing of those two items?
This is Chair Taveras. I'm not seeing any Mr. McNeely, so let's go ahead and go to Commission and Staff Roundtable.
Okay, thank you, Madam Chair. I would let you know as as we leave the Board of Supervisors update, I could should have put this on here, but want to let you know what's coming up to the Board of Supervisors here soon. On May 9th, they will hear ZC 22-18. That is the zone change from RR5 to RR1 on West Route 66. That's that site that's that's one mile west of the City of Flagstaff on West Route 66 at the Naval Observatory intersection. So they will hear that on May 9th. And then on May 23rd, the planning, excuse me, the Board of Supervisors will hold a a work, a an informational session and take action on the P3, the Public Participation Plan that Melissa just just briefed you on. So those are the upcoming items for the Board of Supervisors. Onto our Commission Staff Roundtable.
Mr. McNeely, let me interrupt you here. Commissioners Best and Ruggles both have their hands raised. So Commissioner Ruggles, why don't you go first and then Commissioner Best, please follow?
Well, actually, I had a comment on the Roundtable discussion, item one. So if we want to get Sot's Sot's comment on something else in here, please go ahead with that.
I I'm in the same situation. I think I think we kind of jumped back and forth a little there, so.
Okay, I know what Mr. McNeely is, excuse me, Colonel McNeely is going to say. This is a bit of a mea culpa because the email that you at Community Development got about my request for reappointment was also supposed to be intended to the primary participant who is Supervisor Vasquez. And somehow that didn't happen. I corrected that today. And before submitting this, I also discussed the issue of the self-imposed condition that goes with this with both Supervisor Vasquez and Supervisor Fowler. And at that point, I believe they were on board with that. And I I would like I guess, don't need to say much more than that at this point, other than that that condition that I wrote in was this, should the District 5 Supervisor taking office in January, on January 1st, 2005, have a candidate for appointment to the Planning and Zoning Commission at any time during the remainder of my term, I will submit my resignation. So that person may be appointed in my place. And that's simply because I would be appointed by Supervisor Vasquez at this point in time. And I would have two and a half years of term remaining at the beginning of 2025. And as such, it is only fair and reasonable that if Supervisor Fowler wishes to appoint someone else, I should resign and let her appoint whoever she wishes to the position. Thank you.
Thank you, Commissioner Ruggles. Commissioner Best.
Thank you. Yeah, a couple of things. I wonder if somebody would be so kind as to send out the findings. I don't can't seem to put my hands on mine. And it would be nice to review those before our retreat. The various findings for zone changes, CPs, et cetera. And I don't think we've talked about the 24th or 25th. Do you want emails? Email response to that? Or what are we looking forward to actually determine the date and the time?
So, thank you, Commissioner Best, Madam Chair. On the Commission Staff Roundtable, if we're past item number one, before we get to item number three that you're discussing, Commissioner Best, on discussing your your retreat, we did want to hit item number two on your Commission Staff Roundtable. And welcome Sheila Walsh, your newest commissioner, to the meeting. She popped in after after we started the study session, but I believe is with us now. So, Madam Chair, certainly wanted to make sure we we welcome Sheila.
This is Chair Taveras, and thank you for recognizing her, Mr. McNeely and Commissioner Walsh. I will just say on behalf of myself and I'm pretty, I can I can speak on behalf of the rest of the commission on this. I'm sure. Welcome to the commission. We all look forward to working with you. And I look forward to meeting you in person at the retreat. So, welcome. All right, with that, let's go ahead and then bump to item number three.
Thank you, Madam Chair. And thanks. Thanks, Commissioner Best, for for getting us both the way there. So as we discussed last month, and actually, we had some, I've had some discussion one-on-one with with several commissioners. We are trying to plan your regular recurring commission retreat, which will be a great time to meet Commissioner Sheila Walsh in person. Our targeted dates right now, from the input that I've received from commissioners, is May 24th or 25th. We've got a little bit of time here. We got a good half hour till your public hearing starts. So maybe let's start with with the day, 24th or 25th. And if we could get input from commissioners, maybe starting with, is there either one of those days that don't work for any of the commissioners?
Okay, Commissioner Ruggles, why don't you go ahead and then Commissioner Best, follow up?
Okay, thank you. 24th, I unfortunately have a problem. I have to, I have to see my dentist in Phoenix. I have an appointment on the 24th. I know that we're proposing a session possibly morning or afternoon for the 24th to the 25th. I could probably make the one on the 24th in the afternoon, but I would still be an hour late for that. So my preference at this point has to be for the 25th, either morning or afternoon. So just wanted to let you know, I am sorry about that. I missed it on my calendar. So that's where I am with the retreat.
Okay, Commissioner Best.
I can rearrange things and make any of those four times. Well, I'm pretty respectable.
Okay, thank you. This is Chair Taveras. If what I'm wondering, the next question should be if Commissioner Ruggles cannot make the 24th. I think it's important that he be there. Could I ask for a show of hands of anyone who cannot make it on the 25th? Okay, I'm looking at the list of participants, Mr. McNeely. And I can make it on the 25th. Commissioner Ruggles indicated he could, as all the other commissioners are. So I think what we need to do now is determine, do we want it to be in the morning or the afternoon? If it's in the morning, what time do you plan on starting? If it's in the afternoon, what time do you plan on starting?
So, Madam Chair, if we if we do morning, we would propose so we can so we can get to our chosen venue and setup. We would propose 9:00 AM and that it go from 9:00 till noon with the flexibility if that we could, we could have it go on a little longer and maybe even have some snacks there to make it a little more pleasant. If we start in the afternoon, we propose probably starting at 1:00 PM.
Okay, and then one, two, the morning session would be three. So one to four with maybe, you know, a little way to go later if we need be.
Absolutely.
Okay, I can do either one of them. Is there, Commissioner Wilson?
I would just advocate for the morning session. I think it looks like we could have a pretty complete or full agenda to of discussion topics. And by starting in the morning, that allows us the opportunity, if necessary, to extend the meeting a little bit. Whereas by 4:00 PM, I'm guessing folks have places to be. So I would just like to advocate for the morning.
Okay, Commissioner Vice Chair Burton?
I also would prefer morning.
Okay, well, what we're going to do is make this real simple. I like, I'm a morning person myself. Or if any of the commissioners cannot make 9:00 AM on May 25th, please raise your hand. I'm not seeing any, Mr. McNeely, so it is the morning session on May 25th for the for the retreat.
Okay, thank you, Madam Chair. Thank thanks for everyone for cooperating and getting that set. That was easy. A couple of things I would like to offer here. We we will schedule this at a county facility. I know we did it at the mess hall at Fort Tuttill last time. If that's available, we will book that. If that's not available, we can always use our conference room here at our building. But we'd like to have it in a nice, comfortable space. We we can have a, quite frankly, simply a laptop in the room where if at any point in time Commissioner's schedules change and they can't participate in person, we can have this meeting going simultaneously where you would at least be able to hear contribute to the discussion and see any slideshows that we are giving over over the computer. So just want to let you know, we will make that available. Also, technology these days just enables us to do so. So no point in not doing that. And when we do it, when we do a meeting online such as that, or at least at least be hosting it simultaneously online, that allows us the ability to record it and then have available, have it available to you again in the future. So again, some emergency happens and any of the commissioners can't make it, no problem. We will have a recording of it. You can at least get the benefit of the recording if you couldn't be there to interact in person. Any questions on on those logistics? And again, we'll be getting the the logistics and details out to you as soon as we have it scheduled as to the location.
Commissioner Best?
Yeah, I've I've got a few ideas on the agenda, so I'll just fire off an email, Jess, or give you a call. We don't need to pick up the time now. Thank you.
Thank you, Commissioner Best. And and with that, on the on the agenda, our staff helped, actually Kelly helped find a planning officials training program that's that's relatively new. So relatively current through the APA, American Planning Association. So relatively current through the APA, American Planning Association. We provided a link to just kind of the. The the location doesn't get you into the training program, but a link to the training program so you could understand what it's about. It's ten, ten subjects. It's a video training. The videos range between ten minutes and thirty minutes. Of course, it's provided by the APA. That is a national organization, so it's not specific to any one state. It's pretty generic. But some of this information can be good in understanding from a from a generic perspective. Likewise, as we find in community planning. There's a heck of a lot more city planning and zoning commissioners that commissions out there than there are county. Planning and zoning commissions. So it is common that that things that come out of the APA. Are a little more focused towards cities than than rural counties such as ours. However, many of the relevant principles still apply. So we would like to point out that some of the things, some of the trainings we would like to cover can be covered through this training program. We intend to send you the link to the actual program sometime next week. So what you all on your on your own time. Could freely. Sample those video training sessions as you as you have time to do that. Any comments from any of the Commissioners on anything you saw there with that program? Or or the just just the concept of of using this APA program to cover a few of the generic bases?
Commissioner Wilson?
Mr. McNeely, I followed the link, went to the website, and it appears it costs two hundred dollars to take that course for non-members. Is that true?
So Commissioner Wilson, we got a deal for you. We don't the county only needs to purchase one of those. And I and I'm an APA member and I've already purchased it and that it only costs the county a hundred and twenty dollars. And we can share it with as with as many people who would who would like it shared with them. So not not a concern. We've we've already taken care of that. It's actually a very good value in that we can provide it to our Board of Adjustment members as well. Heck, you know, staff will be reviewing it so we can see what kind of training it is you all are receiving.
Mr. McNeely, this is Chair Antiveris. So are you going to be sending it out to all of the Commissioners in a separate email with the link?
Madam Chair, yes, we we will be sending it out to the Commissioners in an email with a separate link. We still need to test it out a little bit and and understand when we send you a link, what does that look like? You know, is there a login? Is there? So we'll we'll make sure we have the relevant logistics worked out so that when we send that to you, you all will be able to actually use that training.
Okay, okay, good. And I think I know the answer to this question, but I'm going to ask it anyway because subitem F there is legal refresher. We are going to have counsel with us, right?
So Madam Chair, yes, Paul Garns is with us and we discussed this in our staff review. He is very happy to participate, help give some of the presentation and certainly help answer questions.
Okay, that is, that's great. Commissioner Best had indicated when he spoke a moment ago. That he would be emailing you suggested ideas slash topics for the retreat. I would just like to suggest to all of our Commissioners that if if any Commissioner. Also has an idea, please send that to Mr. McNeely. This is an inclusive retreat here. So I want every I want all of the Commissioners to feel like. You know, the issues that they. That they feel are important are are addressed. And with that, Mr. McNeely, I'm not seeing any other hands raised.
Okay, thanks, Madam Chair. The one thing we will try to include. Of course, all great intentions that we will try to include in that agenda is at least a little bit of free time. So that anything that didn't that didn't get on an actual training agenda where we where we prepped. An actual training that we would have time to discuss and have staff and have legal staff there with us. Anything that comes up, it it should be a nice time for free flow of of discussion among all the Commissioners on on ideas any of you have.
Okay, I think I think that that's a really good idea because I was going to actually suggest maybe a Q and A roundtable. At the end of it for just miscellaneous kind of anything. So. That's my suggestion, but I think you already beat me to it. And Mr. Garns, I see your hand raised, so please go ahead.
Just have one suggestion that we follow through on the snacks. If you've got snacks, you have counsel.
I I've already anticipated Commissioner Best's email in that that is a part of their their contractual payment for being planning and zoning Commissioners is. Yeah, high quality snacks and food. So what?
I can make this legal if you want.
We'll see what we can do.
All right.
Okay, good, great suggestion. Commissioner Clifford?
I've got the same situation that Commissioner Ruggles has. This is going to be my last meeting for planning and zoning. I notified Supervisor Pique of this a couple months ago. And with my new position with Gore. I'm actually in Delaware right now and it's eight o'clock. So. I'm no longer going to. Be able to fulfill my duties as a planning zoning Commissioner because of my traveling.
Commissioner Clifford, this is Chair Antiveris and. I'll tell you what, I sure hate to see you go. You have been a real asset to this Commission. We have all worked well with you. You have all worked well. You have worked well with all of us. And we're going to miss you and I will just remind you of the private conversation that you and I had. When I became aware of this and all of my comments to you at that point. In that conversation, please remember them and they still stand. So thank you, Commissioner Clifford, for your service to this Commission and you will be missed.
Thank you and I appreciate that.
So I'm going to ask if any other Commissioner Best, you are unmuted. Do you?
Well, I I just wanted to basically reinforce what you said, Jim. It's been a pleasure and. Gosh, I wish we had some way to throw a party. So maybe that'll be in my email to Jets.
Okay, I think that's a great idea, Saad. Anyway, do any other Commissioners? Well, is JC, is that you, Mr. Christelman?
Madam Chair, it sure is. I just wanted to second what you said about Commissioner Clifford and thank him very much for his years of service. Been a fantastic Commissioner.
All right, thank you. With that, do any of the other Commissioners have? Anything else they would like to address at roundtable at this time? Not seeing any hands raised. Mr. McNeely, it's five twelve. Why don't we end the study session and we will pick up the public hearing at five thirty promptly?
Will do, Madam Chair.
All right, see everyone at five thirty.
Mr. McNeely, this is Chair Aunt Taveris. Is staff ready to start the meeting?
Madam Chair, yes, staff is ready to start the meeting.
Okay, my clock shows 5:30 PM and I'm going to call the meeting to order. I'm going to begin by meeting, reading the meeting rules and procedures. Welcome to the April 26th meeting of the Kokanino County Planning and Zoning Commission. Cases will be heard in the order they appear on the agenda. Following the staff presentation, the applicant and/or the applicant's representative may address the commission. As an applicant, if you agree with the staff report and have no additional information, please feel free to keep your comments brief. Any relevant comments are welcome. Following the applicant's presentation, I will make a call to the public. If you wish to address this case, please state your name and address. We ask that your comments be limited to three minutes or less. Comments must be relevant to the case. Please address all comments to the commission. No matter how strongly you may feel about the case, all comments must be polite and courteous. After all interested public have spoken, the public comment portion will be closed. Discussion will then take place amongst commissioners. Decisions of this commission regarding any zone change or preliminary subdivision plat approval are referred to the Board of Supervisors as a recommendation. All other case decisions are binding unless appealed to the Board of Supervisors. If you disagree with the commission's decision, you have 15 days to appeal. Please contact staff at the Community Development Office for appeal procedures. Due to the virtual nature of this meeting, I will be doing a roll call vote of the commissioners to ensure accuracy for the record. Please mute your speakers and turn off your camera. Also, please do not use the comment function for discussion. It is for communicating with staff if you have a problem with our technology. With that, thank you for joining us this evening and actively participating in our county planning. The first item on the agenda is the Pledge of Allegiance. If everyone would please stand, Mr. McNeely, please lead us in the pledge.
Thank you, Madam Chair. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Thank you, Madam Chair.
Thank you. The second item on the agenda is the approval of the March 29th, 2023 minutes. If there are no corrections or modifications, let's go ahead and move to Commissioner Wilson.
Madam Chair, I just wanted to make sure that we have a quorum. I don't know if everyone had made it back and might be a good idea to check first.
Yeah, I did. I've got. Yes, we do. We have got seven people present.
Thank you.
We, we are all here.
We can't wait.
Yeah, we've got, you're right. We've got eight. Actually, all of us are here and present, so we have two more than a quorum, so we are ready to go. With that, we're going to go ahead. Second item on the agenda is the approval of the March 29th, 2023 minutes. If there are no modifications or corrections, let's go ahead and move to a motion in a second, please.
Madam Chair, I move to approve the minutes as presented.
It will second that motion.
Okay, hold on.
And that's not my cat.
I know, it's my cat. I've got a motion by Commissioner Wilson and a second by Commissioner Ruggles for approval of the March 29th, 2023 minutes is written. All in favor, please say aye. Commissioner Clifford.
Abstain.
Vice Chair Burton.
Aye.
Commissioner Wilson.
Aye.
Commissioner Ruggles.
Aye.
Commissioner Williams.
Aye.
Commissioner Best.
Aye.
Commissioner Walsh.
Abstain.
This is Chair Aunt Taveris and I also vote aye. The motion passes. The next item on the agenda are the public hearings. The commission bylaws allow the chair to change the order of the agenda items. I am aware that case number four, which is CUP 23017 and DRO 22009, will be requesting a continuance. So I'm going to go ahead and bump that case to number one. So I'm going to call it and let's go ahead and address that first. So. Staff.
Thank you, Madam Chair. In this case, the applicant has requested a continuance of this case to allow the addition of an existing contractor's yard to the conditional use permit request. Staff recommends a 30-day continuance of CUP 23017 and DRO 22009 to the May 31st, 2023 hearing.
Thank you, Mr. Short. With that, I will accept a motion in a second, please, to continue these two. Do we, Mr. Short, do we need to do this in two separate motions or can we do it in one?
I would, I would, I would think you would need to do two separate motions since this is two separate cases.
Okay, then let's go ahead and move to a motion in a second on CUP 23017, please, to May 31st.
I'll go ahead and start. I move to continue case number CUP-23-017 until the May 31st, 2023 Planning and Zoning Commission hearing.
Okay, I've got a motion by Commissioner Ruggles and a second by Commissioner Best to continue CUP 23017 to the May 31st, 2023 hearing. All in favor, please say aye. Commissioner Clifford.
Aye.
Vice Chair Burton.
Aye.
Commissioner Wilson.
Aye.
Commissioner Ruggles.
Aye.
Commissioner Williams.
Aye.
Commissioner Best.
Aye.
Commissioner Walsh.
Aye.
This is Chair Aunt Taveris. The motion passes unanimously. Let's go ahead and move to a continuance on DRO 23009.
I'll move that we continue DRO-22-009 to May, what was the date?
31st.
31st?
Yep.
I'll second.
Okay, I've got a motion by Commissioner Williams and a second by Vice Chair Burton to move to continue DRO 22-009 to the May 31st, 2023 hearing. All in favor, please say aye. Commissioner Clifford.
Aye.
Vice Chair Burton.
Aye.
Commissioner Wilson.
Aye.
Commissioner Ruggles.
Aye.
Commissioner Williams.
Aye.
Commissioner Best.
Aye.
Commissioner Walsh.
Aye.
This is Chair Aunt Taveris. I also vote aye. The motion passes unanimously. The next item on the agenda this evening is case number CUP 22-047.
Thank you, Madam Chair. This conditional use permit request is for a recreational vehicle as a permanent residence in generally in the valley area. Zach Schwartz from our staff is managing this case. He has his screen shared. So Steph, why don't you go ahead, Zach, why don't you please go ahead and give your staff report?
Thank you, Mr. McNeely, Madam Chair and Commissioners. This is Zach Schwartz with Planning Staff. In this case is CUP 22047. The property owner is Isham Group LLC from Hidden Hills, California, and the applicant is Lexington Isham from Hidden Hills. The property is located at 1329 South Dewey Drive in the Valley area and the subject property is 1.0 acres in size. The zone is agricultural residential and this request is for a conditional use permit to use an RV as a permanent residence. In this case, it's an airstream. Here's a vicinity map, so this is Highway 180, this is Highway 64 in the Valley area. A little bit to the east of Highway 180 is the subject property off of Dewey Drive. And here's an aerial photo of the subject property. All the properties around it are also zoned AR and there's no development in the area. You can see that there's very little vegetation on the subject property. And this is a site plan showing where the airstream would be located, so within the setbacks for the zone and having a new driveway off of Dewey Drive. And here are some photos of the subject property. I apologize that I wasn't able to get better photo, more zoomed out to see the entire unit, but the, the photo on top shows the unit and a deck associated with the unit and pergola. This deck is actually under the size for a threshold of requiring a building permit. And so just some details on this request. The applicant is looking to use this RV in association with the next case on your agenda, CUP 22116, also requests for a permanent RV for the applicants to live in one and the other RV would be for friends to visit. The zoning ordinance in a single-family residential zone only allows the conditional use permit for one RV per property to be lived in permanently. The applicant would use a utility trailer for water and wastewater and they would dump the wastewater offsite at a nearby dumping station. The applicant's narrative notes that they'll use the Raptor Ranch, which is just adjacent to the airport where at the junction of Highway 64 and 180. And as already mentioned, the deck and pergola structure in this case that are existing don't require a building permit because of the size, but the connections from the unit to an electrical pedestal that the applicant is requesting and to the utility trailer for water and wastewater do require building permits. As far as citizen participation, the applicant notified neighbors within 300 feet of the subject property about this request and they held a Zoom meeting at, on, sorry, at 8:30 AM on November 4th, 2022 to discuss this request and no neighboring property owners attended. Staff also did not receive any comments on the case. As far as long-range plan compliance, there are two plans that are applicable to this area, so the overarching county comprehensive plan and also the Valley Area Plan. Both of those plans support affordable housing and a variety of housing types. So staff does find that the request is consistent with the plans. On your screen are the four findings of fact that the commission has to make in order to approve this case. in order to approve this case. And I've laid out in my staff report that staff is able to make all required findings of fact, and if there are any questions about that, I'm happy to answer those. Just for some general analysis, staff supports the use. There's no surrounding development that would be impacted. The RV use is common in the valley area, and no neighbors have objected. I do have on the screen also for you some, the three conditions of approval that staff is recommending should the commission be able to make the findings for approval as well. One of those conditions is that the use permit would be valid for a period of five years to expire in 2028. And if all conditions are met at that time and the renewal is applied for on time, the case can be renewed by staff without coming back to hearing for an extended or an indefinite approval period. So with that, if the commission can make the required findings of fact, staff is recommending approval of case CUP 22047 with the recommended conditions of the staff report, and I'm happy to take any questions at this time.
All right, Commissioner Wilson?
Mr. Schwartz, you said that the applicant would be hauling wastewater offsite, and I'm wondering why there's a condition that requires them to attain a wastewater permit? If that's the case.
Thank you, Madam Chair. Commissioner Wilson, so this would leave open the option if the applicant in the future wanted to, rather than hauling all of the time, install a wastewater system that they'd just be put on notice that it is required. And that would be, they would have to get an environmental quality permit if they decided to put in a septic, in any case, but it's just sort of a heads up.
Because the way it's written, it almost sounds as if it's conditioned, you know, it says recommended conditions for approval. And it says it's supposed to obtain a permit for wastewater, even though they won't be needing or wanting one.
The last two words are as required there.
Right. Okay. Thank you.
Thank you.
Commissioner Clifford?
In this, in the site plan, it actually shows a septic system. Is that a mistake, or what's going on with that? Because if, if they're going haul off, why, why are they putting a septic system on their site?
Thank you, Madam Chair. Commissioner Clifford, so the applicant had originally planned to do a septic system. I think they investigated that and saw that it was quite an expense, I think, in this area mostly. Alternative septic systems are what you would need to have there. So at this time, the applicant instead has chosen to use this utility trailer. Okay, thank you.
Are there any other questions from the commissioners? All right, not seeing any. I'm going to ask if the applicant or the applicant's representative would like to address the commission this evening? If so, please state your name, and I would also like to ask if you have received the staff report, if you've read it, and if you agree with the three conditions as recommended.
Hi, everyone. Thank you for, first, thank you guys for, for your time. Yes, I have read it, and I understand the conditions. I would love to meet, but first, can, can everyone hear me?
We, we can barely hear you. And let me ask you to state your name and address for the record, please. If possible, could you maybe move closer to the mic or do something to facilitate a better?
Yeah, absolutely. Is this, is this better?
A little bit. If you talk really loud, I think we can hear you. So go ahead and state your name and address and continue.
Let me try this. Is this better?
That's a little bit better. Yeah, go ahead with that.
Okay, great. So my name is Lexington Isham. Address is 1355 South Dewey Drive. And to kind of touch on the two questions that were brought up, I, I am eventually planning on doing a septic unit. I wanted to get all of my permits going as quickly as I could. So I was compliant to the codes and that you guys have. However, the, the end goal is definitely to do a septic system. However, as mentioned, the nature of the area, 16 inches down, we're, we're dead rock. So alternative septic systems financially right now are a little, little tough, and so we're planning to eventually be doing a septic system, but for now, we'll just be hauling the trailer. And that is, I guess that, that, that was it. Thank you guys for your time.
Okay, and hey, can I get you to state the, your city and state, please?
Yes. 1355 South Dewey Drive, Williams, Arizona, 86046.
All right, thank you very much. Do any of the commissioners have any questions for the applicant? Not seeing any. I'm going to ask if there is anyone in the public that wishes to address the commission on this case this evening? If so, please raise your hand or unmute. I will call on you, and you will have three minutes to address the commission. Not seeing any. I'm going to go ahead and close the public discussion or public comment portion, and I'm going to open it at commission level. Commissioner Clifford?
I can make the findings. He's doing it the right way. He's coming to us versus the UP. A lot of them have not done that.
Okay, Vice Chair Burton?
I can make the findings.
Okay, Commissioner Wilson?
I can make the findings.
Commissioner Ruggles?
I will echo Commissioner Clifford's comments on this, and I can also make the findings.
Okay, Commissioner Williams?
I can make the findings.
Commissioner Best?
I can make the finding.
Commissioner Walsh?
I can make the findings.
And this is Chair Aunt Taveras. I also can make the findings and completely agree with Commissioner Clifford's comments that this applicant is doing it the right way, and that is very appreciated. With that, let's go ahead and move to our emotion in a second, please.
Hey, I'll go forward with that. I move for approval of case number CUP dash 22 dash 047 with conditions as written by staff.
I'll second that.
Okay, I've got a motion by Commissioner Ruggles, a second by Commissioner Clifford for approval of CUP 22 dash 047. All in favor, please say aye. Commissioner Clifford?
Aye.
Vice Chair Burton?
Aye.
Commissioner Wilson?
Aye.
Commissioner Ruggles?
Aye.
Commissioner Williams?
Aye.
Commissioner Best?
Aye.
Commissioner Walsh?
Aye.
This is Chair Aunt Taveras. The motion passes unanimously. The next item on the agenda is CUP 22 dash 116.
Thank you, Madam Chair. CUP 22 dash 116 is also a RV's permanent residence, also in valley, actually, next door with the same applicant. Zach is managing this case as well. He has his screen shared. So Zach, please go ahead and give the presentation.
Thank you, Mr. McNeely, Madam Chair and Commissioners. This is CUP 22 116. Property owner is Isham Group LLC from Hidden Hills, California. Applicant is Lexington Isham from Hidden Hills, California. Property is located at, just want to make sure I have this right. 1355, I apologize the error on the screen right now, but it's 1355 South Dewey Drive in Valley. Parcel size is 1.07 acres. The zone is agricultural residential, and this request is for a conditional use permit for an RV as a permanent residence. This is the valley area, and the subject property is just directly adjacent to the previous case. Here's an aerial photo, so no development around, very little vegetation on the property. Here's the site plan. The RV unit is shown as meeting all the setbacks. Here's a photo of the RV on the subject property. So there are two deck structures that are under 200 square feet, but the building official noted that the pergola structure connecting them brings them over the threshold that would require a building permit. I spoke with the applicant, and what they plan to do is just cut the connection between the two, and thus a building permit wouldn't be required for the decks and pergola structure. For some details on the request, the applicant is looking to, in conjunction with the previous case, live in one of the RVs and then allow their friends to visit in the other. And the applicant would use a utility trailer for water and wastewater that they would dump at the Raptor Ranch. I've mentioned the building permits related to the decks and pergola structure with the connections to required, requested electrical pedestal, and the utility trailer would require building permits. As far as citizen participation, the applicant notified property owners within 300 feet of the subject property at their Zoom meeting to discuss their request. There were no neighboring property owners that attended, and staff did not receive any comments on the case. And staff has found that this request is consistent with both the comprehensive plan and the very valley area plan. And in your staff report, I've laid out that staff can make all for required findings of fact for approval of this case. And I've laid out on this slide the proposed conditions of approval for the case. So with that, if the commission can make the findings of fact required to make an approval of this case, staff is recommending approval of CUP 22 116 with the recommended conditions of the staff report, and I'm happy to take any questions at this time.
All right, this is Chair Aunt Taveras. Mr. Schwartz, I am not seeing any hands raised or any unmutes. So it does not appear that there are any questions from the commissioners. I'm going to ask if the applicant, the applicant's representative would like to address the commission this evening? If so, please state your name and name and address for the record. And I would also like to ask if you have read the staff report and if you agree with the conditions it contains.
Hi, everyone. It's me again. Lexington Isham, 1355 South Dewey Drive, Williams, Arizona. I have read the staff report. I do understand the conditions. I guess the only thing would be to apologize to you guys as I did not know about the building requirements of the 200 square foot deck until after it was built. So we are now retroactively trying to fix this. Again, I do, I do apologize, and we're making measures to, to remedy this as quickly as we can. Thank you for your time again.
Okay, thank you. Do the commissioners have any questions for the applicant? Seeing none, I'm going to ask if there is anyone in the public that wishes to address the commission on this case this evening? If so, please raise your hand or unmute, and I will call on you. Seeing none, I'm going to close the public comment portion and open it up at commission discussion level. Commissioner Clifford?
I can make the findings on it, like the other one. He came to us, and it's he's doing it the right way.
Okay, thank you. Vice Chair Burton?
I can make the findings.
Commissioner Wilson?
I can make the findings.
Commissioner Ruggles?
I can also make the findings, and I also concur with Commissioner Clifford on doing things the right way here.
Thank you, Commissioner Williams?
I can make the findings.
Commissioner Best?
I can make the findings.
Commissioner Walsh?
I can make the findings.
This is Chair Aunt Taveras. I can also make the findings. With that, let's go ahead and move to a motion in a second, please.
Madam Chair, I move that CUP 22 tab 116 be approved as presented with the conditions as recommended by staff.
I'll second that motion.
Okay, I've got a motion by Commissioner Wilson and a second by Commissioner Ruggles for approval of CUP 22 dash 116. All in favor, please say aye. Commissioner Clifford?
Aye.
Vice Chair Burton?
Aye.
Commissioner Wilson?
Aye.
Commissioner Ruggles?
Aye.
Commissioner Williams?
Aye.
Commissioner Best?
Aye.
Commissioner Walsh?
Aye.
This is Chair Aunt Taveras, and I also vote aye. The motion, the motion passes unanimously. The next item on the agenda is case number AM dash 22 dash 007.
Thank you, Madam Chair. This is Jess McNeely with Community Development Planning Staff. Case number three is AM dash 22 dash 007. It is a zoning text amendment to the zoning ordinance as requested by a community member. And Bob Short is managing this case. He has a screen shared. So Bob, why don't you go ahead and give the presentation? Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. McNeely. Thank you, Madam Chair, members of the commission. This case is a medical marijuana amendment, AM 22 007. And in this case, the applicant is Michael Perrin. I hope I pronounced that right, of Tempe, Arizona. Michael represents Green Farms, and that is the only marijuana dispensary establishment in unincorporated Coconial County. However, if this application, if this amendment were to be approved, it would also apply to any other future dispensaries in the county. And the request in this case is a zoning ordinance text amendment to section 3.12 point C, point 3, point E, to change the required closing time for medical marijuana dispensaries from 8:00 PM to 10:00 PM. And this is the proposed text amendment. This is a section out of this. This is from section 3.12, the medical marijuana section of the code. And it, it indicates that this case is just asking that this 8:00 PM be crossed out here and be replaced with 10:00 PM to allow them to stay up in an extra two hours. This is some background on this case and medical marijuana in the county and in the state. So in 2010, Proposition 203 legalized medical marijuana in Arizona. A year later or the next year, in 2011, the Board of Supervisors approved ordinance 2011 03 to provide regulations to the operation of medical marijuana dispensaries. As I said, that's in section. That is now in section 3.12. In 2020, Proposition 20207 legalized recreational marijuana. So that's a different thing. Doesn't require a medical marijuana card. It doesn't require that, that you have any kind of issues that would require medical marijuana. The county has not established any record, any regulations for recreational marijuana, but simply relies on state regulations for that at this point. So when medical marijuana was passed under Proposition 203, there were a limited number of licenses issued for those dispensaries. I believe at the time it was something like 140. It was one dispensary for every 10 pharmacies in the state. So that's when this was established. That's when the Green, Green Farms was established. And in 2020, whenever Proposition 207 was passed, those dispensaries were given priority for recreational marijuana establishment license. So they were the first ones to get those license, and Green Pharma has one of those as well. And then later on, I believe there, they moved forward, and they are issuing some additional license, but those were they gave, they made it a very simple process since they're already established and allowed the dispensaries to also get a license to sell recreational marijuana. So Green Farms holds both the dispensary and establishment license. And the, like I said before, the zoning ordinance amendment would apply to any new dispensary as well. Right now, it would only apply to Green Farms. And so I should say the difference in a dispensary, of course, is that it's for merit, for medical marijuana sales, while a marijuana establishment- While a marijuana establishment is for recreational marijuana sales. There are no dispensaries north of Green Farms and there are very few to the east in Arizona. And I'll show you a map to point that out. These are the dispensaries in Arizona. Green Farms would be this last one up here. The other one is the dispensary in, in Flagstaff, in the city of Flagstaff. As you can see, north of here on eighty-nine or even to the east, there aren't any other dispensaries. So anyone that's coming in, is, is coming south, uh, for medical marijuana, they would have, that would be the first one that they would come to. Also people in Donnie Park and, and other areas in the county and outside the county as well. That would be the first one that they came to. And the fact that it closes at eight o'clock is, you know, can make people travel further. So that's basically the reasons for the request. It requires increased ta- travel times. It also increases traffic and it, uh, causes more impact on county infrastructure. Obviously, in some of those cases, it's not a huge impact, uh, but it does definitely require people to travel further. If they've already traveled down from Page, for example, they have to travel further into town if this one happens to be closed. This would also align county regulations with Flagstaff that already allows, uh, that already has a ten PM closing time. Uh, these are some of the policies from the comprehensive plan, uh, related that support this particular request. These are, I won't read all of them, but they're basically related to health, economic development. Economic development has to do with tourism. And also with preserving infrastructure. And these are the findings of fact for a zoning ordinance amendment. The first finding is that the change is consistent with the goals, objectives and policies of the comprehensive plan and this ordinance. So as I said before, the previous slide, uh, the, those are policies that would support this. Uh, the comprehensive plan has policies that support health and wellness of citizens and visitors, the local economy and preservation of circular infrastructure or, excuse me, circulation infrastructure. Finding number two is the change will not be detrimental to the public health, safety, comfort, convenience and welfare. Uh, in this case, the change would improve services to medical marijuana patients and reduce the need for them to travel longer distances. And then finding number three is the change will not adversely affect the established character of the surrounding neighborhood or be detrimental to adjacent properties. So in this case, we're looking in general at a commercial properties. That's the only ones where, uh, uh, marijuana dispensaries are allowed. Uh, so other businesses, obviously in the commercial zone are allowed to stay, uh, stay open past ten o'clock. And that includes stores that sell alcoholic beverages. Uh, so this would, uh, not affect the character of these commercial areas. And with that, staff recommends the commission forwards a recommendation of approval of AM twenty-two zero zero seven to the Board of Supervisors. And with that, I'll take any questions from the commission.
Commissioner Wilson?
Um, I may have spoke too early here. I, I actually have a question for the applicant. Is that inappropriate at this point?
Um, this is for staff at this point. Um.
Forgive my mistaken hand.
Well, that's okay. That's okay, Commissioner Wilson. Uh, are there any other questions? Or any questions? I'm not seeing any. So I'm going to ask the applicant if, uh, he would like to address the commission this evening. And I would also like to ask if you have read the staff report and if you agree.
Thank you, Madam Chair, and my name is Michael Perrin, Tempe, Arizona.
Uh, my, Mr. Mr. Perrin, I, I cannot hear you. Is it possible for you to maybe move closer to the mic or do something?
Is this any better?
Oh, that is so much better. Yes, please state your name and address for the record and then please go ahead. Thank you.
Thank you, Madam Chair. My name is Michael Perrin, Tempe, Arizona. And yes, I do have the staff findings and I do agree with their recommendation. And I'm happy to answer any questions that, uh, the, um, commission may have.
Okay, thank you. Um, Commissioner Wilson? You're up.
Thank you. Uh, Mr. Perrin, I'm just curious to know if you have communicated at all with your neighbors and asked, um, whether they have any thoughts regarding a decision to remain open later and the, any potential impacts on them?
Um, in the sense of, uh, impacts on them in that specific question, no. Um, the question's actually been presented to us on, on the flip side from the neighbors. I'm wondering why we weren't open until, uh, ten o'clock.
Thank you.
Okay, do the commissioners have any other questions for, um, the applicant? All right, seeing none, I'm going to ask if there's anyone in the public that wishes to address the commission on this case this evening. If, so please raise your hand or unmute and I will call on you. All right, seeing none, I'm going to go ahead and close the public comment portion and open it up at commission, uh, discussion. Commissioner Clifford?
Um, I have no problem with this. It's coming in line with what the city's doing and he's right there on the border, so I can make the findings.
Thank you. Vice Chair Burton?
I can make the findings. I see no problem with the amendment.
Okay, Commissioner Wilson?
I can make the findings.
Commissioner Ruggles?
Uh, I can also make the findings is, I think is a logical thing to do, especially after reading the applicant's narrative, so.
All right, thank you. Commissioner Williams?
I also can make the findings.
Commissioner Best?
Uh, this seems to pass the common sense test and I can make the findings.
Thank you. Commissioner Walsh?
I can make the findings.
Uh, thank you. This is Chair Aunt Taveras and, uh, I agree with my fellow commissioners' comments that this is just a, uh, common sense, well thought out, uh, amendment. So I think it's, it's in order. With that, let's go ahead and move to a motion in a second, please.
Madam Chair, um, this is Jess McNeely with Community Development Staff and you can see that, that Mr. Garnes from our legal staff has raised his hand. He, he has a recommendation for your motion on how you would make a motion in this case. So if you could please recognize Mr. Garnes.
Yes, Mr. Garnes, please go ahead.
Thank you, Madam Chair. Can you hear me?
Yep, we sure can.
Okay, um, this is legal nitpicky details that I'm going to get into here. But, um, the, there is a slight discrepancy between the provision for initiating an amendment to the zoning ordinance in the zoning ordinance itself versus a provision for amending the zoning ordinance in Arizona statute. Um, the, the applicant in this case is going, um, about this, um, in the correct way. It is in accordance with statute, um, and that is, just to make a record here, um, that is Arizona revised statutes, um, title eleven dash eight-one-three subsection C. And that provides that a property owner or authorized agent of a property owner desiring a zoning regulations amendment shall file an application for the amendment. That's exactly what the, um, applicant has done here. Um, there is not provision for, um, this course of action in the zoning ordinance itself. Um, but there is statutory provision. So I just want to make the record clear that, um, the Planning and Zoning Commission would be proceeding in making a recommendation to the board here under, uh, the statute that I just mentioned and the course of action laid out in that statute. That's all I wanted to add. Thanks.
Okay, thank you. So do we need to be specific in the motion? Does it need to say, um, I make a motion for recommendation to the Board of Supervisors for approval of AM two-two dash zero zero seven pursuant to ARS eleven dash eight-one-three C?
Um, that, that would be even better than what I just laid out. Putting it in the motion would be great.
Okay, all right, um, which commissioner got that?
If you could refresh my memory on the ARS, please.
Okay, it is ARS eleven dash eight-one-three C.
Eight-one-three, okay, eight-one-one, okay. I would like to make a motion that we recommend approval of AM dash twenty-two.
Hold on, hold on. Um, legal counsel has his hand raised.
Oh, I'm sorry. I'll, I'll lower it. It, it just remained up.
Okay, okay, you're fine. Commissioner Wilson, um, can you start over, please?
I can. I would like to make a motion that the Planning and Zoning Commission recommend approval to the Board of Supervisors of AM dash twenty-two dash zero zero seven in accordance with ARS eleven dash eight-one-three Charlie.
I'll second that.
Second that motion.
Okay, uh, Commissioner Clifford got in there. I've got a motion by Commissioner Wilson and a second by Commissioner Clifford to recommend approval to the Board of Supervisors for case number AM dash two-two dash zero zero seven in accordance with ARS eleven dash eight-one-three C. All of those in favor, please say aye. Commissioner Clifford?
Aye.
Vice Chair Burton?
Aye.
Commissioner Wilson?
Aye.
Commissioner Ruggles?
Aye.
Commissioner Williams?
Aye.
Commissioner, oh, there you go. You're unmuted.
Aye.
Commissioner Best?
Aye.
Commissioner Walsh?
Aye.
This is Vice Chair Aunt Taver- or excuse me, Chair Aunt Taveras, and I also vote aye. The motion passes unanimously. The final item on the agenda this evening is a call to the public for items not on the agenda. Is there anyone in the public that wishes to address the commission this evening for items not on the agenda? Seeing none, my clock shows six sixteen PM and the meeting is adjourned. And Jim, I hate goodbyes and I just want to wish, I want to wish you the very, very best as you, as you move forward in your new job. I'm very excited for you.
Well, thank you. I appreciate that. And, um, send me the information where your retreat is because I was looking at my calendar. Uh, and just a little bit of background on my new job for everybody as to why I need to step down. I am still going to own land in Tony Park. My wife will actually still be here. Um, I signed a one-year contract to build three new buildings for Gore. And I'm going to be the project manager on those three buildings. And it's going to be extensive travel. That's why I need to step down if, uh, if I wouldn't have been, uh, appointed to the position there, um, or asked to take the position, um, I'd still be, I, I would redo my, um, asked to, uh, come back onto the board because as a lot of people know, I, my commission expired quite a while ago. But because, um, we were short on commissioners and everybody knows what the reasons were. I had talked to Tammy and a couple other people and, uh, decided and told them that I would stay on until we had enough commissioners for a quorum. Um, that being said, uh, I appreciate everybody and I, I've learned a lot from everybody. Um, and keep me posted on your retreat because looking at my calendar, I may be back in Flagstaff that week.
Well, that, that, that's great. We could make a little bit more formal goodbye.
Yeah, I can stop by and say goodbye to everybody.
And now the pressure, pressure's really on now for good snacks.
But, uh, but anyway.
I know.
I, I just wanted to let everybody know as to why, um, why I needed to do this. Um, and I will be moving back to Flagstaff, uh, um, uh, I just have, uh, I'll be, I, I'm not buying anything in Delaware. I'm actually staying on a Gore property in Delaware that Gore owns. And, um, I'm still going, continue to, uh, to own my land here in, uh, in Flagstaff and Donnie Park. So, um, that's about it.
So, so you may be back, Jim, if
Yes.
there's an open position, you may approach the supervisor and express your willingness to serve again?
Uh, very possible because the reason I only went one year is because I plan on retiring in a year.
Okay, so this is, this is almost a see you later rather than a goodbye then.
Yeah, hopefully, uh, yeah, because I, I won't leave Flagstaff because my daughter and granddaughter are here. And, uh, we, uh, we support them quite a bit in babysitting and get my granddaughter to school and stuff like that. And, uh, my wife said, uh, you can go travel, but, um, you know, it, it's one of those things where I will be in Flagstaff and you'll probably see me around town or at a coffee shop or whatever. Um, but, uh, but yeah, um, my main, main focus is, uh, is right now Delaware and Phoenix were building, uh, building some more buildings and, um, I'm doing the infrastructure on them.
Okay. Well, it, it surely makes sense and that is quite the commute. So it's nine, it's nine, almost nine thirty where you're at right now.
Yep.
Yeah. Okay, uh, Mr. McNeely, would you please be sure to include Jim on the retreat, um, materials?
Madam Chair will do. We hope to see him there.
Okay, all right. All right, Jim, then we're, we're going to hope to see you. Yeah, we're like, so, you know, we're kind of pushing for pizza now.
Well.
All right.
Okay.
With that, good, good night, everybody, and thank you again, Jim. We hope to see you at the retreat, okay?
Okay, thank you. Thank you for your support, everyone.
Good night. Good night.
Thank you, everyone.
Good night.